Good evening Wakefield. Town council meeting for October 15th, 2018. We are going into executive session. A possible vote for executive session to discuss litigation regarding Wood subdivision because an open meeting may have detrimental effect on the position of the town with the intent to go back to open session 20 minutes or so. So we should be back roughly 20 minutes. Can't be sure, but just to let you know.
You need a motion.
I need a motion.
Second.
Roll call.
Roll call?
Yes.
Aye.
Yes.
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 Welcome back to Wakefield Town Council meeting for October 15th, 2018. We just came out of executive session. Thank you for waiting. Next, we are going to move on to, we don't have any public participation tonight, so we're going to move on to presentation, action item, financial update, possible presentation of fiscal year 2018. If the town administrator, Steve Mayo, would like to address that portion.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. I do want to start by saying that fiscal year 18, which ended on June 30th at 11:59 PM, was a very strong year for the town. And I do want to thank the hard work of many individuals, including the town council. I don't think people know the time that you spend going over these budgets and making sure that our town is fiscally solvent. And I certainly appreciate it, and the townspeople should too. Finance committee, the school committee, the department heads, the employees, and all of this together has resulted in a very strong financial town. It's important to note that over the years, we have actually done a pretty good job by steadily increasing our spending on capital items. We've continued to maintain our preserves. We have funded OPEB, which is other post-employment benefits, which means that we need to have money for employees' health insurance once they retire. There's 14 million in that account now. A few short years ago, there was nothing, something the state is requiring and looks at in our financials. We've established a special education stabilization account, which we will talk about a little bit later this evening. We've targeted more monies for roads and sidewalks. We funded social programs, all-day kindergarten, increased SED spending on a regular level, nurses, social workers, fire prevention officers, school recovery officers, and recently, we're looking at recovery coaches. And we've done that all within Proposition 2.5. And also, since fiscal year 2013, this council has embodied a philosophy of when we could not to go the full 2.5% on the tax levy. And over the last six years, we've left a cumulative $2.5 million in the hands of the taxpayers. If we follow suit this year, which I hope we do, it will be up to around 3 million. It's quite a testament to the strong work by this board, finance committee, and town employees. What this means to you as the average taxpayer, you're going to save about $60 a year on your taxes. It's not a huge amount of money, but it's still $60 a year. And if you looked at that over the last few years, it's about $300 that we left in your pocket for your family to spend on what you want. So, did want to start off with that and kind of show where we are, and hopefully, this will work. There we go. So, where we started, on July 1st, 2017, remember our fiscal year goes from July 1st, 2017 through June 30th, 2018, state-certified free cash of about $9.6 million. Felt very healthy level. But we use that free cash. We don't just sit around and let it sit in the bank somewhere, although that is nice on its own. In November of 2017 town meeting, we used 2.2 million to balance the budget. We had $140,000 for the fire contract. And in May of the 2018 town meeting, we put 165 for fire department supplement. So, we did spend money and use that free cash to keep ongoing items and ongoing services. So, free cash in 2018, we spent $2.5 million. So, I figured at the end of the year, we would probably be in an area where we have about $8 million worth of free cash when we ended the year. And that would be if all receipts came in as forecasted, if all departments spent their allotted budgets and returned nothing to the town, if there was no snow and ice overdraft, we can certainly blame Mr. Stinson if he spent any extra money on snow and ice. Interestingly enough, we used to budget about $273,000 for snow and ice 10 years ago. We're up to $850,000, $900,000 now. So, we're in a much better place from a budget sense where we should be. And we also know that this also takes into account that if all receipts come in low, because your town administrator has been called Chicken Little many times by members of the finance committee and maybe members by this board. But most, and so revenues come in higher than I anticipate. I would much rather be in that role than to say, geez, they didn't come in as much, so we have to do cut budgets or do something else. Also, more importantly, our department heads do a great job in handling their budgets. So, when I look and I roll out the end of the year, and Kevin Gill and I do that, and I look at where we're going to be with free cash for year number two, for the next year coming. And we replenish free cash in two ways, returns from departments on budgets and surpluses in projected revenue. You know, we have a baseline, what we think it's going to be. If our budgets come in lower, meaning we spend less money than is budgeted, that goes right back to our bottom line, or if revenue comes in more, that also goes back to our bottom line. So, last year, our departments returned over $1.6 million in free cash, almost close to 1.7. And that is in the town report that was sent out to all of you, and it breaks down by each department. And like in our recommendation book at town meeting, it's broken down into different areas. So, general government returned $221,000. Protectors of persons and property, $222,000. Human services, $30,000. Public works, $7,600, despite many, many projects they had to work in. Education, which is not only the Wakefield Town Schools, but also vocational schools, returned $138,000 to the town. And that was really such a good faith estimate from the schools. If you remember, at town meeting, we supplemented their budget from the special education account. So, it didn't come out of free cash, but it came out of that SED account for rising special education costs that they had incurred that year. At that same time, there was some talk in the legislature about increasing SED funding for the schools in that fiscal year. We didn't know if that was going to happen in April. I think it happened on June 29th, we got the money, which is what happens with the state. So, the school department was very good and said, you know, listen, we, town took a chance on us, and they returned some of that to the town. I think that showed a lot of good faith. Unclassified, $47,000. Benefits, $14,000. This is all in the packet. This will all be online tomorrow, the next day, so everyone can see this at home, too, broken down by department. Most importantly, group insurance. Our group insurance, which is our health insurance mainly, they've done a fantastic job working with our public employee committee. And I got to say, we have, when we went to the GIC years ago, what dividends that paid for the town, allowed us to fund OPEB, that allowed us to do a lot of these things, and return money to the town because we worked with almost every employee or every employee in retiree to say, hey, you have the same benefits, the same doctors on Plan X. If you went to Plan Y, you'd be paying a lot less, and so would the town. And I think people really appreciate that. I think the other item is that we have a management philosophy. We talk with our department heads all the time, is that there is no rush to spend the money at the end of the year because we're going to say, hey, you didn't spend all your money, so we're going to decrease your budget. If you need it, spend it. But if you don't need it, don't worry about us coming through and having a big slash in cutting your budget because you were frugal or something happened, or maybe the mailings didn't have to go out this year, or there was a timing issue. Those things aren't going to happen to you. And I think that that's appreciated, and that shows year after year, the department heads not being afraid of returning money to the town. So, that was a big factor. They returned a lot of money to the town. The other thing, the other big factor is revenues. We have been very conservative over the years, I guess is a good way of putting it, of how we do our forecasted revenues, at $6.3 million. We have steadily been increasing that by about 5% per year, per our policy. But revenues are coming in higher than we're anticipating for a number of reasons. We're going through a building boom. A lot of building permit fees come in. I can't count on that coming in every year because we don't know it's going to happen. So, we are a little conservative. We have a baseline. Motor vehicle excise tax, we budgeted 3.8 million for that. It came in at 4.3.
Wow.
So, people are buying new cars. That's part of it. Are they going to buy new cars again next year? I don't know. The economy could change. There's also a timing in when those come out, so maybe we had an extra submission in that year. So, we're very careful about that, and we look at that, you know, all the time. Meals and room taxes, that came in at about $643,000. So, we're doing very, very well in that regard. We budgeted around $550,000. When we started this, the Department of Revenue told me when we put the meals tax in, it'd come in at 2010. Meals taxes alone are coming in at $323,000 a year. So, that shows that new restaurants are coming and people are using, people are spending money. year's budget on revenues. I can't be sure. So, this is where we're a little bit conservative, and I agree that I'm a little bit conservative there, but I'd rather say, hey, we had more money come in, guys, and it's adding to free cash and looking strong than saying, I'm going to come back to you and say, geez, for some reason, excise tax came in at $1,007,000, and we've got a big problem. So, I've been there when the state has cut our money, so that's a lot worse position to be in. So, this right here is where we ended the year. I've never seen these numbers this high in my tenure here, and I've been around for a while. Free cash of about $10.4 million and stabilization of $3 million. So, these are what our reserves are. We also have some other reserves. We have water and sewer reserves. We have OPEB, that I talked about, $14 million. And in our special ed education, SPED, special ed education stabilization account, remember, we drained that, there's $10,000 in there. I will tell you that these items right here, the fact that we have free cash, the fact that we have a stabilization fund, the fact that we have a financial policy that looks and dictates how much there should be there, the fact that we're budgeting very carefully is a huge factor when we get our AAA bond rating. This is what they talk about, and it's a very nerve-wracking phone call that I go through. It's called a surveillance call, and I get nervous every year. Town assessor is there, and he knows that there's a lot of nerve-wracking for myself in that call, but it means something. So, anyways, when we look at our financial policies, stabilization should be at a minimum of 3% of our operating budgets. That's about $2.7 million if you take, consider our operating budgets and debt service and capital of around $90 million. So, the third 3% would be $2.7 million. We're at comfortable amount of $3 million. I think we have to look at our stabilization account over the next few years and see if we should be adding to that. But you can see how that's been growing over the years and how it's now up to a balance of about $3 million and about 3% of our budget. So, this is a very, very steady, but I think that we do need to get back to maybe adding some money into that over the next few years. Free cash should amount to between 2% and 8% of our operating budget. Our policy is about $7 million. Don't worry, we're going to get back to there. Our current amount is 10.3. Again, this is the highest I can recall. And you can see how we've used our free cash over the years. You can remember that in 2015, 2014, 2015, we did a forklift upgrade to the school department and increased that budget by 11%, well-deserved, and that's when we used part of our free cash, and now we're going back on the upswing. So, I am very pleased about that and very happy about that, and I'm happy that we have it because, coming forward, we're certainly going to be looking at using this. So, what I'm suggesting, and in meeting with the town accountant, Kevin Gill, the treasurer, meeting with Victor, that we use some of our free cash. We use $3 million to balance the budget. Embedded in that figure is about $573,000 that we will not be taxing the taxpayer for. So, that is going less than 2.5. It's going to about 2.1. Again, it's leaving that money in the taxpayer's hands. We have a clerical contract that we, this board has talked about and approved for submission at town meeting. That's about $300,000, excuse me, about $30,000. We have a DPW contract coming up that we'll be talking about tonight. That's about $100,000. We have the first phase of the streetscape upgrades in our downtown, 331. We talked about that at the last meeting. One of the articles on the warrant will be Walsh Field, looking at the netting and the backstop there to make it a little bit better and safer for the people playing tennis and people playing baseball. There's also an article through the DPW about ortho mapping, which is really mapping the whole town. We should be doing this on a five, seven-year basis. We haven't done it for about eight or nine years now, maybe 10. Looking at that, it's very important for as we go forward. And that SPED stabilization account, which is now at $10,000, we're going to suggest, and I know that the school department has met with the, discussed this with the chairman of the FinCom, looking at putting $500,000 in that. And that's because things happen during the year, then someone or somebody moves into town, or someone needs services, and they certainly should get services, school budget can't handle it because it wasn't, you know, planned for. So, that's a perfect spot to do that. So, think of this as, you know, of that money, you know, putting money into stabilization to keep us even more solvent. And I will say that that's something that the rating agencies really like. So, at the close of our November town meeting, we will have $6.1 million in free cash, which is still well within our policy. I think that at the end of our fiscal year, we're going to end up with around $8 million or so in free cash, which is certainly at the high end of our policy. I know we have a lot to do, and we have lots of wonderful items we'd like to do for the town. We have, we want to increase roads, we want to work on the downtown, public safety building, DPW garage on the horizon. It is very important when we fund these, those that we are going to bond for, that we maintain that AAA bond rating, because that saves us hundreds of thousands of dollars that would just go to banks in interest. So, I think that I'm very proud of the work that this board has done, or this council has done, the finance committee, school committee, my department heads, all working together to make sure that we keep our town solvent and find that balance between reserves and programs. And I think when you look at going around us, and I never like to, I don't want to blow up, blow our own horn, but a lot of our neighbors are doing 2.5 overrides or have done overrides for operations. Another one shared with me that they're looking at deficits over the next near future. They don't know what they're going to do. They don't have anywhere near the programs that we have. Think that we've done a good job over the last few years, so I do want to thank the board for their support in this. And Mr. Chairman, I am available for any questions at this point.
No, it's good.
And then we can run into Victor, I'm making him wait.
Well, Steve, I think you had a large role to play in that, too. Okay, so, any questions for Steve?
I just have a technical question. On the enterprise funds, the water and the sewer, does that money go into town reserves or is that reinvested into a specific enterprise account?
That stays in those enterprise accounts.
It does.
Water and sewer, and that is used for those projects. So, when we set the water rates, you'll hear that maybe we're going to use the reserves there to do water main replacements, what have you, or in sewers. So, that stays in there. That does not flow into the general fund.
Okay, thank you.
As much as I'd like to grab it from Mr. Stinson, he's over there. Won't let me.
Steve, a couple of questions. It seemed like the return of funds this year from various departments was a bit higher than usual. Am I reading that correctly or?
Yeah, like group insurance was a little bit higher than we thought.
Right.
And part of, parcel of that was, is that part of the GIC settlement that we made with the union reps was that there would be a free month, but it was reserves that we had to put in. That's not the town's reserves, it's the PEC reserves. And that money got moved over and it kind of jumped to fiscal year, so 250 of that is there. So, that's a little bit higher, but still looks good.
Yeah.
So, that's because of that. On the protection of persons and property, which I think is a little bit higher, too, there were some hires that were budgeted for in the police that didn't come through, that there weren't hired. We take a long time, they've got to go to the academy, they've got to be vetted. So, that was in the salaries, so we hadn't.
Was that part of the, like, I think it was $171,000, $172,000 that was returned back to us?
Yeah.
From police?
Yeah.
I don't recall the exact number, but I think it's around that.
Let me pull that number for you.
Or 172,250.
Right, that's exactly the case there.
And then the other piece was the encumbered for fiscal 2019. Can you just speak to that? I know there are several.
Absolutely.
Several issues, obviously, some more consequential.
Right. So, what happens is there are certain items that we've budgeted for, they're mainly capital items, that just can't get finished in a fiscal year. So, what happens is if we're going to carry something over past, you know, July 1st, a lot of things happen in the summer. Think of things that happened in the school department. If we can't finish work in the schools during the school year or in vacations, it's going to go into the summer. So, we hold that money for that specific purpose. So, I think in certain instances, that might be cameras or wiring or what have you. So, you saw in the IT, there was $65,000 that people will see when this goes up for capital outlay there. The accounting department is an audit, $16,000. That's not going to happen until this fiscal year for last year. So, those items, we just hold. DPW always has a number of them, because they're doing them all the time, that go through. So, there's always items that are held, but they're held for that purpose. They're not held just to look good.
I just said, I think that you, Kevin, and the whole team have done a great job here, certainly.
Thank you.
This is as strong a position as we find ourselves in financially. I just think it's not a time that we take our eye off the ball, especially when we see what's going on in so many other communities. So, I appreciate all that you've all done collectively to get us to this place. I just think it's so important that we not sit back and rest on our laurels here, because this is something that's every day, we have to make sure that we do all the best.
Absolutely is every day. We don't get to rest.
And I know you all. Yeah. Definitely, but you've done a great job, and I think that's.
Thank you. It's a team effort, believe me.
The town is better because of budgeting like this and numbers like this, because it enables us to improve the community in a number of different ways. Thank you.
Julie.
I just wanted to follow up on the incumbents' question. Is that the same explanation for the article summary? So, the articles that we passed in FY18 that weren't all spent in the balance, is that just going to be spent in future years?
Exactly.
Okay, so, like, there's like 40% of that money wasn't spent, but it's all.
Right, so if you look at, exactly. For instance, the, think about the Walton School.
Right.
The Walton School, most of that work happened after July 1st. So, that money, even though the reporters of July 1st are going to say, what, there's $3 million left in that account?
Yeah.
I can guarantee you that there is maybe, maybe $3,000 in that now.
Thank you.
But that's exactly what happened, yeah.
Thank you.
Great job, Steve, and great job to the department heads. To Ed's point, we can't take your finger off the trigger just yet. We just got to keep rolling along. Steve mentioned some towns around us passing overrides or trying to pass overrides for operation reasons. They can't afford to pay their bills. That's what an operational override is, is that the town cannot afford to pay their bills. We're not in that position. I don't see us getting in that position anytime soon, thanks to, you know, Steve and the departments. But great job, and again, thanks to all out there that contributed to this scenario.
It's a great, it's a great team.
Yeah, the AAA bond rating, I mean, that we brought up at the last meeting, too, were example of, I think it was 2.5, $3 million expenditure saved us $300,000. That alone, any of these large projects is amazing. So, the AAA bond rating is something to protect at all costs, which we don't have a problem doing, even though you worry about it each year, which is good. Yeah.
It's a singular point, but the returning money to the town from the departments shows such a trust, I think, between town hall and the departments that not every, hardly any community, I would suggest, has that. And anyone who's worked with budgets, you know, you're sometimes trying to spend the extra money because you're afraid if you don't, it will be cut out. I think, Steve, the relationship you have with our departments is a give and take. There's respect on both sides. They're not going to get everything they want, but they know you will respect decisions, and they respect your decisions. It's a unique situation. I think it's really one of the main reasons we're in such strong fiscal shape. So, thank all the department heads, as well as yourself.
Paul.
Credit does belong at the helm where Steve sits on all of this. I mean, 10 years ago, when we initiated this, we were all on very shaky grounds, and it took a lot of deep thought from this body to heed Mr. Mayo's guidance and direction to get to where we are today. And after 10 years, we're in a very healthy situation. And speaking with representatives from the surrounding communities, they're very envious of how we are today compared to what they are. So, that's kudos, not only to Mr. Mayo and his department heads, it's also to this board for having faith in what he's telling us and voting in the affirmative and moving in that direction. So, hats off to everyone involved.
Steve, just out of curiosity, what was the free cash like in 2008, do you remember? 10 years ago?
Million six, million seven.
Okay. Rest of my case. May I read anything?
There wasn't a lot of sleep in 2008.
No, no, it's no sleep. No, it's just great.
This doesn't require a vote, right?
No, it does not require a vote. Thank you.
Okay, so I think we're all.
Want to jump to Victor?
Let's jump to Victor, right. So, we want to go from 3A, if you don't mind, over to 4, public hearings, tax classification, possible vote to open public hearing for tax classification with Victor.
I think you do want to have a vote, Mr. Chairman, to open the public hearing.
Yes, okay.
Victor, send.
Hi.
Motion.
Motion, yeah.
Second to go into public hearing.
All right, all in favor? These are all.
Aye.
Roco.
Okay, Roco.
Aye.
Yes.
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 Victor, welcome. Thanks for coming in today.
Glad to be here.
What's our annual classification hearing? One of our board members, Walter Schofield, is unfortunately traveling, and we want to send out our thoughts and wishes to Sebastian Tyng, who would normally be here, but he happened to suffer a bit of a tumble and he's laid up for a bit. So, if you're Facebook friends or what have you, shoot him an email, say we're thinking of you. And I'm sitting here with our current board chairman, James Doudario.
Hello.
Well, classification hearing, those of you that know me, that's a picture of the House, that is of the average single-family value in Wakefield, representative of what we're doing here. Before I dig into details, I don't want to get yelled at by Kathy Kelly. Folks, tax bills are due November 1st, so make sure that, you know, you stop by town hall, see those friendly faces at the tax collector's office, and they will gladly take your money and give you a wonderful receipt for it. Required action by the town council is the selection of a minimum residential factor, selection of an open space discount, granting of a residential exemption, and the granting of a small commercial exemption. Minimum residential factor, factor of one would yield a tax rate of $14.38 per thousand. It's a simple calculation, tax levy divided by the total value of the community, which for the first time is above $5 billion, and multiply that by 1,000 to get to the single tax rate. But as we know, in Wakefield, Chapter 200 allows us to select a factor less than one, thereby shifting more of the tax burden onto commercial properties. Historically, Wakefield has chosen the maximum allowable shift factor to afford residential taxpayers the lowest possible share of the tax burden allowed by state law. For past several years, the town council has opted to raise the tax levy less than Proposition 2.5 limit. By not raising for this year an additional 573 and change of the tax levy, the residential tax rate is reduced by 10 cents, and the commercial, industrial, personal rate is reduced by 20 cents. Translates into a $53 savings for the average single-family taxpayer and 262 for the commercial, industrial, and personal classes of property. Just a couple of points for shifting options. Again, at a factor of one, yields one single tax rate of $14.38, and 175, which is typically the shift that the town of Wakefield adopts, you end up with two tax rates, a residential rate of $12.83 and a commercial tax rate of $25.16. Average single-family for fiscal 19 in Wakefield is $528,200. If you look at a single tax rate, the tax bill would be 7,500, just under 7,600. But by shifting to 1.75, again, allowing residential taxpayers the lowest possible share of the tax burden, the tax burden goes down to $6,777. It saves the average single-family taxpayer $819 by the shift alone. The average commercial value is slightly over $1,003,000, and you see the effects at various shift intervals of what a shift does for the average commercial value. One thing you should know, the median commercial value in Wakefield is just under $475,000. So, while this is done at the average value, most values fall significantly below that, and the impact wouldn't be as severe as what you see on the screen. At the maximum allowable shift, the selected MRF would be .8926, and our estimated tax rates will be $12.83 residential and $25.16 for commercial, industrial, and personal. And one small note, these rates can't change a penny either way through the state approval This graph shows the difference between values and taxes for our major classes of property from fiscal eighteen to fiscal nineteen. Property value went from four ninety-eight five to five twenty-eight two, or just under six percent increase. The residential tax rate is going down twelve cents. The average residential tax bill will go up just under five percent, or three hundred and twenty-two dollars. The average commercial value, despite some changes to the tax base, stayed relatively steady. The tax rate went down forty-five cents, and the average commercial bill actually went down one point six eight percent. More tax rate notes, fiscal nineteen is the fifth year of the full debt exclusion for the new Galvin Middle School. Should I take "new" out? Is it still new? Still call it the New Galvin School? Get some more mileage on that. Debt exclusion is a little over two point four million. That adds to the total tax levy. It adds forty-two cents to the residential tax rate, or two hundred and twenty-two dollars to the average single-family tax bill, and eighty-three cents to the CIP rate, or just about eleven hundred dollars to their tax bill. And properties are flying off the market compared to 2017, with days on market at thirty-four days. That's amazing. And values up a little over four percent. This data I accumulate from, from the multiple listing service, their yearly summaries. Open space discount is defined as land which is not otherwise classified and which is not taxable under provisions of Chapter 61A or 61B, otherwise known as Chapter Lands, or taxable under permanent conservation restriction, not held for the production of income but maintained in an open and natural condition, which contributes significantly to the benefit and enjoyment of the public. A maximum exemption of twenty-five percent may be adopted. The town has never adopted that type of discount since there's no properties that meet that legal definition of open space. Residential exemption, truth be told, I messed up a little bit. If you do a residential exemption, say, at twenty percent, the tax rate goes from twelve eighty-three to fifteen twenty-seven, and the break-even point on that is the five hundred and thirteen thousand. If you did a discount up to thirty-five percent, the residential tax rate goes up to seventeen dollars and eighty-one cents, with a break-even point of, that should be six hundred and thirty-four thousand, five hundred. At that, approximately thirty percent of the homes will be shouldering the burden and paying for the benefit of the other homes, and in a town like Wakefield, most homes are owner-occupied. Small commercial exemption, exemption of up to ten percent of the property valuation for commercial properties only. Eligible businesses cannot have more than ten employees, as certified by the Department of Employment and Training. Building value cannot exceed a million dollars. One business in a building could not qualify unless every other business in that building qualified, and the exemption goes to the building owner. And while we review the list annually, we really can't find any properties that meet that definition or be worthwhile to consider a small commercial exemption. And how do we stack up against the competition? Fiscal year 2018, surrounding towns, their tax rates, and those that split, their average single-family values, and their average tax bills. The lowest one is always August because they have Route One, and they're also a one seventy-five shift community, and Wakefield is the only other one seventy-five shift community on the list. To look at the average single-family tax bills from 2006 to the present, maybe I should just make it ten years. It's starting to get a little crowded on this list. The average increase has been roughly four point five percent a year. And the average commercial tax bill, 2003 to present, just gives you an indication of how taxes have been going. It's been, particularly since, say, 2014 through 2019, estimated relatively stable, with not a huge swing in tax values, because the way the market works is residential properties are, as we know, values through the roof, where people are paying for homes, and commercial values cannot keep with that kind of increase. So. And that's all I have, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Questions, concerns?
Quick one here. What is the highest assessed piece of property in town? And I'm pretty sure I know the answer.
You're going to look at Water Pop Parkway. I think there's twenty-eight million there.
Okay.
And, well, if you look at Edgewater Drive, roughly, you're looking at a hundred to a hundred and ten million in total value for that Class A and B office buildings up there.
Thank you. Great presentation, by the way.
Thank you.
Jane?
Victor, Jane, thank you for your work on this every year with all the detail. A few questions, Victor, on that. I know you had mentioned that the commercial properties aren't keeping pace with the assessed, but it looks like, with the residential, but it looks like, from an assessment standpoint, the commercial property has basically been flat, where the residential has gone up. Is there anything that can be done to try to revisit that, the, the commercial assessments? It seems, it only, I think it went up by about a thousand dollars, one point three one one to one point three one two, whereas the average single-family was four hundred ninety-eight five, five twenty-two. So, that's a considerably higher.
I revalue the entire town every year. And when it comes to commercial properties, I request income and expense data annually from all commercial property owners. I review that data, enter it into my system, use it to create my models, see where it may impact my existing models, and I also review outside indices like CoStar or CB Richard Ellis to find out where regionally some of these things should be. But, the way the commercial market operates, if you have someone that signed a lease four years ago, before what values are now, before what lease rates are now, they may be paying four or five dollars less per square foot than the market may command today. And some of the building owners, like up at Edgewater, would rather not go up the five bucks on subsequent leases and only go up two or three for credit-worthy, stable tenancy. So, that's why some things may look below market, if you will. You have a lot of existing tenants, a lot of incentives for them to stay.
Are you finding that you are getting most of the information you're asking for of these, you know, commercial properties? And, I mean, if, how much discretion is built into that, say, if you are not? Because I know there's, you know, if you own a commercial property, there's any number of ways that you can work with those numbers, you know, appreciation and the like in order to find a value.
I'm well aware of how they work with numbers.
Right, yeah.
And a lot of that stuff, when it gets submitted to me, is, can be cast aside.
That's why I'm asking in terms of your, your ability, the extent of your discretion to be able to, you know, look at this and say, you know, that's, frankly, an underreporting of, of value.
The biggest example is writing off taxes twice. First off, and their expenses, they'll submit, oh, we paid five hundred thousand in taxes. Oh, wait a second, if I'm giving that to you as part of the overall capitalization rate that we use to determine value, guess which one I'm going to kick out that comes off your expense line? It's all in accordance with the income approach to value, which is what we practice.
So, is there anything more that you can do within your discretion to have those as truer figures?
Define truer?
Well, I mean, I just, just, it's such a negligible increase, and I don't, I don't imagine that the, I know that the commercial market is lagging behind, and I know that it's not on pace with the residential market, but it just seems like that's...
Well, for example, you have...
It's basically flat, as, as reported in here.
You do have some major players in our marketplace repositioning. Harvard Mills, for example, repositioning, so that value would be down as they move clients around to prepare for their next venture.
You're saying temporarily.
And you have a few places in Edgewater that they lost a huge client up there that creates a vacancy that impacts the value. So, these, these are the things that I have to recognize and the things that I have to work with. Income and expense statements, when the big ones come in, pour through them. And typically, for a newer building, you really shouldn't be submitting to me anything more than thirty percent expenses, because I'm going to kick it out. And if we have to go to the appellate tax board, so be it. There's no magic formula that I have to just raise those values arbitrarily. I need data. And in fact, what I try to do, what I did this year, is page your properties from my assessing software, and I want to make sure I don't develop blind spots in my database. So, I had one of their commercial property appraisers come on in. Hey, let's look at this. Am I missing anything? Have I hit all the right pressure points? Is there any data that I haven't seen, or am I, am I weak on something? And we work, we produce the values, and really, I was pretty much on target with where we need to be. So, it's not beyond me to ask for help when I needed, or ask for another set of eyes to look at it.
Then the other question I have, too, is I know that you said that, I think the average of the last twelve years has been like four point five percent, and this year we're looking at four point nine eight percent. And I just, and it's not directed at the tax assessor, but I guess it's more at this body. I have real difficulty reconciling such a strong financial position the town finds itself in. Steve, you just laid it out very succinctly at this, with the fact that we're actually increasing taxes at an even higher rate this year. I mean, it's almost five percent. So, that's higher than on average. And, you know, so I did, just to kind of get, you know, for my, get my own bearings, I did, you know, a few comparisons. Like inflation is at two point three percent. I looked at, you know, the COLA, the cost of living adjustment that Social Security does, you know, eight-year average of that was like one point seven percent increase. This, this year, I think it's, I believe it's two point eight percent, you know, starting in December. So, I'm, so I'm thinking about not just seniors, but also just working families with this. If inflation's only going up at two point three percent, if cost of living adjustments for those receiving Social Security is only at two point eight percent, but we're taxing them at almost five percent, I understand that the property values have gone up and that is driving that, but most people, if we're looking to have folks age in place, or if we're looking to have families stay within town, probably aren't looking to sell that property. So, that realized value that is used to compute what their tax bill is, is just, at this point, nothing more than a burden for them. And I don't know what we, as a body, can do. I know that we're under two and a half, you know, we're falling under two, I get that. I know that it's very formulaic, and, you know, Victor, you and I have spoken about it before. I know we have the Circuit Breaker program, which is, you know, I was speaking with Steve about earlier, that we're rolling that out for seniors. That's, that's going to be a helpful piece. But I'm also thinking about the working families with a few kids who don't have, you know, some of the senior programs that we have available to them. And it just seems like, yet again, we're outpacing, you know, what a residential income is in a given year. And I have concerns about that, especially given how strong a financial position we find ourselves in.
Well, what I've seen, particularly with this board and prior iterations, including what we planned for fiscal nineteen, is leaving over three million dollars in the hands of taxpayers, money that the town otherwise probably would have spent elsewhere, but better left alone at home. The senior circuit breaker program, home move petition that we have for the town of Wakefield, is working its way through the State House with the leadership of our state delegation. We expect to hear something on that, hopefully, in the next six to eight weeks, favorably. And for seniors at home that may be watching, when you file your income taxes for 2018, when you do this next April, make sure you talk to your certified tax preparer about the senior circuit breaker income tax credit that the state offers, because our local credit, that will be paid for with a shift in the residential rate, slight shift, will be based on your receipt of that. So, and I will be putting articles in the newspaper, speaking at length. They'll get sick of me at the senior center, and I'm probably down here and everything, so, to get the word out for folks. And the application timeline for that would be next August. As far as that, I mean, those are concerns, but those concerns face every community. Without the Galvin debt exclusion, which is two hundred and twenty-two, of the three hundred and twenty-two increase, from my standpoint, within the four corners of taxation, we're on the mark. And the things that we can't handle, we have no, the things that we have no control over, the rate of residential valuation increase, relative stagnation in the commercial market, and it's not from a fear of over-assessing. If anything, I usually get my average fifteen, twenty commercial crybabies that file every year and want to do a dance with me. But I have no answers for the things you just brought into the discussion here.
Creatively, what else can we be doing? Is there anything, any other town within the Commonwealth or anywhere else for that matter is doing that we can think about doing? Because it just, I just, like, each year, we're just, we're, we're not, we're outpacing, you know, inflation, the cost of living adjustments.
Long-range planning view, try to attract and retain commercial development. All these little things that we do with Steve's leadership, we, we did a little personal property R and D development exemption on lab equipment. Sounds like nothing. We had one company in town, started talking about it. All right, we didn't collect forty thousand in taxes on their eight million dollars worth of equipment that rapidly depreciated, but you know why? It allows me to pick up the phones and talk to my friend Peter, the attorney at Cummings Properties. Peter, you got these two properties on Autobahn Road. Why don't you think about knocking them down and building a campus? We have this exemption. Together, we can attract businesses from Cambridge and Boston that don't afford the exemption. So, these are the creative things that we try behind the scenes.
I think that's why we should be talking more about that and looking into those options, because that's, I mean, it takes...
We're always trying and always talking.
To take it off the back of the, of the residential taxpayer. Thank you. I think the other thing you're doing is you're shifting as much as you can. You're giving them the best rate you can. And I recognize that, and I just think we have to do more.
We've talked about a business development position.
Paul?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, I thank Jane and Victor, I thank both of you for the presentation that you make. I find the one page where you're talking about the average tax bill, 2018 to 19, the most talked-about page, when I go to talk to the people, because even though we're telling them that the tax rate went down, you know, twelve cents, they just don't grasp the fact that the value of their property went up. And it's, so they're saying, well, my taxes went up. Well, they don't differentiate between the two, and that's a hard thing for anyone to talk about. I mean, and I'm not an assessor. So, to go to your point, it is good for what he, his recommendation, as far as the commercial is concerned, that's why we have to push for mixed development instead of straight residential. So, when we talk about our business, commercial areas, and a shift to residential, we have to make sure that we have that business component in there, instead of going strictly residential. Because if you lose too much of your commercial, we're going to be in even hotter position with our taxes for our elderly, or for, for the rest of us. So, we have to try to maintain as much commercial in our commercial districts as possible when we move forward, and try to stress that to the developer, our powers-to-be. We're looking for mixed development, not just straight residential. I mean, that's, has to be a factor. If we lose that, we're going to lose a lot more, and then it's going to be harder for us to explain why people's taxes went up that much more when we don't have the commercial to back it. So, great job. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Paul. Ian?
Thank you for the presentation. You know, as someone who intentionally chose not to take tax in law school, absolutely. People said, you know, how could you not do that? Because I hire people like you to do all my taxes? You make it so understandable. I think Ed's points are, I think they're all good points. The two twenty-two out of the three twenty-two, people need to remember that, that two twenty-two dollars of the average three twenty-two raised in people's taxes are the Galvin, and it's why we have people moving in, it's why our property values are growing. I think, you know, what you said, increasing commercial property is the key, because I wouldn't want us to go back to that pre-2008, and even when I was younger here, when we just didn't have a lot of services. We were not a town that did as good as we are doing now for our young people, for our seniors, for our schools. So, you know, Stonem's tax rate might be lower, but I don't think they're providing what we're providing based on folks that we're talking to in Stonem. So, it is, I absolutely see where Ed's coming. I think it's tricky, and I think what Steve did with that R and D, you know, might start out small, but as you said, you're reaching out and talking to people, trying to, we're right off one twenty-eight, we have to capitalize on that. So, thank you so much for your offer, both of you.
June?
And I would just say, thank you, and I met with Victor last week to better understand it as the new person on it, and so it was very helpful. Thank you, Jane. And to Ed's point and to everybody's point, certainly, I think taking advantage of the commercial and the exemption is important, but I think we shouldn't lose sight that this open space discount might have some value. And I understand, I kind of looked at the language on it, and certainly, we don't have large agricultural or forestry land, but we may have recreational land with the coming of the, the rail to trail, there may be something adjacent to that. I just, it looks like when the open space report was done, a couple, about a decade ago, there were a couple of people who took advantage...
there were a couple of people who took advantage of this exemption. And I don't, and this is not to you, Victor. I don't want answers. I'm just saying, this may also be another opportunity that we have to look around. And there may be something there and there may not. But it was another way to make Wakefield an attractive community and perhaps kind of offset some of the others. Victor's smiling, so maybe he has something to add.
We have open space. We don't have open space that meets this narrow legal definition. We do have a couple of areas of chaplain. Those are people that agriculturally work. And actually, I think golf courses, part of it is chaplain. But after that, there's nothing that meets that narrow definition.
It'll be interesting to see what were the two recreational properties that qualified in 2004. So there may be nothing there. I'm not saying, I mean, you're an expert on it. But, you know, maybe there is something to look at in open space. And maybe tax is not the way to go, but there might be other opportunities to, to use that.
No, I mean, just to echo what Tony, Tony said and everyone else is here. You know, there is an opportunity to look for an economic development, community development person to really focus. I know Victor does a lot of it. Steve, you do a lot of it. You know, to have someone who really focuses in on looking at businesses and community partnerships. It's just something to keep on the back burner to address all the concerns we raised. And we've all been talking about it for a couple of years, so just to highlight that.
And how many years are left in the middle school?
15.
Okay.
20? 15 or 20, I forget. I like 15.
A few more.
Few more.
We'll check on that.
Not short.
Few more years.
Yes.
Yes. So. Mr. Chairman, you need four votes. You need a vote to set a minimum, minimum residential factor of 8.8926.
Do I have a motion to set the rate at 8.?
0.8296.
0.8926.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Seven, zero. Opposed?
You need a motion not to offer the open space discount because nothing qualifies.
Can we have a motion to not offer the open space discount?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none?
A motion not to grant the residential exemption as we're mainly a residential town.
So a motion to not grant.
Residential.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none?
And a motion not to grant the small commercial exemption.
A motion to not grant the small commercial exemption.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none? Thank you very much.
To get two votes?
Yes, definitely. Let's move on to seven license permits with two guys.
Take the stand, gentlemen.
Come up to the table.
Thanks for waiting so long. We got a few delays, but all worthwhile. And if we can, if we can, eventually, when we get to both parts, just, it was just voting once. I don't think we need to do it twice.
You can vote on both at the same time if you wish.
Yeah, okay. So this is for the common Vic Chiller, Vic Chiller license application. Two guys, 61 New Salem Street, and also the entertainment license for two guys on 61 New Salem Street. Welcome.
Thank you very much.
How are you guys doing?
Good.
How's business?
We don't know yet.
It's going to be good. Do you want to make any comments or do you want to say anything in particular about?
It's a great way to promote your business.
Yeah, sure.
We just want to see like how it's going to come up. I mean, I'm new to the town. I'm out of, I'm primarily from Brazil, but I've been in the country for about 18 years now.
Great.
And I've been in Rockport for 18 years and work in the same location with the same amount of time, 18 years. And opportunity came, came to, I saw the place over there. I came to buy one unit, ended up like taking over the whole, the whole space.
Yeah, thank you. That's fabulous.
Yeah, and I heard a lot of good things about it the past years. And so I've been scooping around, trying to find out more about the place. And evidently, there's a lot of good things about the location. So I want to see if both of us can keep going, that, keep going whatever happened over there before in years, so.
Is this the old chuck wagon?
This is the old chuck wagon.
I was trying to figure out where it was.
I spoke to Mr. Olivera the other day. Basically, he's cleaned it up. It's going to stay basically the same.
Yes.
And they do have one TV that I've been there having breakfast, watching. Same, it's the same TV?
Same thing.
Same TV?
Different channels, no. No, not yet. Yeah, I offer some Brazilian food in my allocation, but just one, just one man items. I just want to, just want to stay strictly to breakfast and lunch for now.
No, it's great.
It's a nice location.
A lot of commercial, right, a lot of commercial down there as well, a lot of hungry people. Any questions for two guys?
Make a motion then?
Sure, if you want to. Just do a combination?
Yeah, you can.
Vic Chiller and entertainment?
Yeah, Vic Chiller and entertainment.
Second.
All in favor? All opposed? Welcome.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for doing your business here.
Thank you for the opportunity, okay?
Thank you.
If you ever need something, come to us again.
Definitely. Thank you very much.
Thanks for waiting too. It was worth the wait, right?
Oh, yeah, it was. Thank you.
Oh, good night.
Does the TV only stay on Fox, do you think that?
Yeah, I wasn't sure where it was.
Does the TV only stay on Fox? Will it change now?
Okay, so we have, seven A and B are done. Three, three B, right. Let's go after three B. It's a deed, a possible declaration of parcel. 2105285A is available for disposition.
Okay, actually, Mr. Chairman, if we could do three B, one, two, and three together. We could do it all in one vote to, because the board is so inclined. Some of us may recall that in 2014, by a large majority, a town meeting voted to authorize the town council to sign, actually, to sign a deed if we received special legislation from the state legislature to swap two larger parcels consisting of over four acres to a, and for a 1.3 acre parcel for land in the Holland Road Stark Ave area. And this is really cleaning up something that's been around here since 1987, when Mr. Anjum looked, put in a subdivision and looked to build on a lot on Stark Ave. Tried to do something regarding an easement for some drainage, which the town meeting did not decline to take. So this kind of sat for a while, for almost 20, 30 years. After that time, Mr. Anjum looked to build on the Stark Ave site. And part of that was for the town to accept an easement for conservation land in the back. Well, I will tell you that at that meeting, we must have had all of Stark Ave here, very concerned that that would cause some flooding up there. And the town council decided not to accept the easement at that time. So cooler heads prevailed it, and actually, it was the neighborhood that came in and said, you know, gee, Steve, there's a town lot land over here. Mr. Anjum wants to build a house for his family, for his son. And could we do something? So we went back to the town council. Town council agreed, or bought a selectmen at the time. Went to town meeting, passed overwhelmingly to go to the state house and get the special legislation. One thing I found out about special legislations, that it takes a long time to get that through because you have the House Council that makes some changes and the Senate Council makes some changes. And then we come back and forth and it's kind of very interesting, interesting process. So in any event, town meeting passed that overwhelmingly with one caveat, that the lot that the Anjums are getting cannot be further subdivided. And that is in the deed and we're all ready to sign that now. And so I would like is the town council to vote to declare the 1.3 acre parcel as available for disposition, so we can do that. And to accept the deeds for the other two parcels, which would give us the four acres. And then to execute the deed for the Holland Road parcel. I have that all here that Tom Mullen has, has prepared tonight. The other thing is here is that if you look at all of that conservation land in that area, is that we're creating, what do they call this? A necklace?
The, yes, the open space.
An open space necklace. Necklace of, which is trails to go all through that area. So it's really is something that worked out, solved the neighborhood problem, worked good for a, a family and puts a lot back on the tax rolls. So it's all a good, good thing. And I think town meeting saw it that way a few years ago. So if that's, the town council is so inclined, Mr. Chairman, I do have those items to be signed. And available questions?
Do it all, do it all once. So three B, one, two, and three. We can have a motion to pass those.
Second.
And a second?
Do we need to list the parcels?
I think that we can list them in the minutes as separate with one vote. Yep.
And all in favor?
Just in case, Mr. Tom Mullen reviewed, prepared these, so it's, everything is.
Yep, right. And, and, and like I said, we're going to, we hold this in escrow until we get the deed swap and everything.
But the deed's he drafted, so he's.
Yeah, deed's he drafted, yeah, yeah.
And there was no need for action on conservation, Commissioner?
No.
Uh, no, town, conservation has already accepted this. They will have to sign the deeds as well. And I will have those around for your signatures today as well.
They accepted in 2014 or they did it this time?
This time.
They did.
Yeah, well, they, they, they're out there. They did it in 2014 because they were part and parcel of the motion. But they've also have met with Mr. Anjum because the new lot has some conservation things too. So they're all in on the whole thing.
So on this right now, so the lot that Anjum is getting is 1.3 acres, but it cannot be subdivided any further.
Cannot be subdivided any further.
And there is some conservation that may have to be addressed.
He's already done that.
The two parcels that we have is going to be ultimately turned over to the conservation commission once it's accepted by us.
Correct.
Signed by us.
Okay.
Just on the conservation commission, do they ever come and speak to us about what they do or?
They can, if you'd like.
Okay.
They just, in my tenure, they have.
They have it in mind. It would just be nice to know what they're working on in the town, just to hear about some of the stuff.
Absolutely.
That's an aside.
Ian?
So this, this meeting at town council in 2014 is probably one of my favorite town council meetings because it was really well attended by the neighbors. The board was completely split on how we voted. But we were all really super respectful of each other's opinions and understood. I remember who was I, maybe Falvey and I or Peckland and I were on opposite sides, but understood where the other one came from tremendously. And the people I voted against, the neighbors, came up and thanked me for being transparent and why I voted. And then at town meeting, it passed overwhelmingly. It was such a civil discourse, respectful discourse, not, you know, a great compromise. And I, I, yeah, it was great. I still remember that meeting so well because we were, you know, no one was voting the same way. People weren't all happy, super happy in the audience, but they knew that we were doing the, we each thought we were doing the best for the town.
Was he with Brian McGrill? Was that his attorney?
I'm sure Brian, but it was.
Yeah, he was.
Yeah, it was. And then town meeting, it went really smoothly because everyone knew we were trying to. Trying to come out with the right decision. It was.
Tiz was the chair of that meeting.
Oh, yeah.
Tiz was great. Tiz let everyone talk. Yeah, outside of public hearing. It was a real respectful meeting on all sides, which I liked. All right.
Any other questions, comments, since we're on the roll here? Okay, so with the three B, one, two, and three, we have the motion, right? And second, and just all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Hearing none? Okay. Thank you very much. That was good. Thanks, Steve.
Just three signatures.
Yep. Do we want to go to? Slice or just slice? All right, so why don't we just go with the three C? So slice logo sign on the highway, three C one.
Yes, I received a call and then a letter from.
From John?
From, yeah, from John at Slice. There, I guess they have been speaking to Mass Highway about, you know, they have those signs on the, on 128 that says Panera Bread, whatever they say.
The blue sign?
The blue sign, next, next exit. He's been talking to them about Slice. And what he's looking for is for the town to say they have no objection if he puts his name on a sign on 128. That's all I know.
Is that, is it prime gas slice or just slice? Just slice logo only?
He just asked for slice.
Slice, okay.
It's just the logo.
Logo, yeah.
That's all he asked for.
I have no objection. I use those all the time because I travel so much with regard to hockey or whatever. And if I see a, you know, a nice little restaurant sign, it makes us get off to grab something to eat. So they look nice. They're not, you know, it's advertising for the town.
It's on the GPS, I think, a lot. But that's okay. Julie?
I was just curious about this because I thought it was an interesting kind of promotional thing. So I looked into it a little bit and I think, I think it's great. The one thing I did notice that is it looks like the town will have to sign off that it is handicap, handicap accessible by our handicap accessibility officer. And I was actually curious who that is.
That would be the building inspector.
It would be the building inspector. So anyway, just be aware of that. That may come as well. But I'm completely.
I think it is, it is new, so it is. We're lucky on that one, it is.
No, I'm not worried that it is. But I thought that that was kind of an, that's really the one input they really wanted in doing this, which is, which is great. But no, I, I think it's a super thing for Wakefield.
This is a great opportunity. This is the owner's thinking outside the box to promote his own business. It'll probably not cost them a lot of money. So this is just a, it's a, it's a great thing all the way around.
Probably just 20 years to get it.
Not a town, honey.
No, it's, yeah, it does cost money. That's why everybody doesn't do it.
Good. Is it for a specific location, the application, or is it just, do we approve it?
No, that I don't know. It'd be somewhere on, right away. I don't know where. On the highway.
Somewhere on 95.
Yeah, probably after, I imagine, 41. 41, 42, between. Okay, so do we have a motion?
Move to approve the slice logo sign on the highway per any regulations Julie had mentioned?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Hearing none? Slice approved.
If you do go there, they give you the biggest slices.
Sure. No, it's going to be.
Really not good.
Yeah, yeah. Paul knows there'll be bigger slices now, so.
Thank you.
Okay, the contract, DPW laborers contract.
Yes, one of the articles at town meeting will be the DPW laborers contract. We had actually talked about this in executive session on, I think, our last meeting. This is the last outstanding contract that we have right now. After this, every bargaining union will be under contract. In this particular case, and as I've done, or as this board has done with other unions, is we are going to bring in the UMass Collin Center to do a, a study of looking at the job ranking and the categories of different positions within the, within the bargaining unit. I think this, we've done this in the clerical and we did this in supervisors' union. There are people that have many different disciplines and they shouldn't be all lumped together. So that is something that's a pretty important process to go through. It is lengthy. It involves interviewing department heads as well as employees to see what they're doing and how, you know, how their different jobs are. This will help us really immensely in making sure that people are in the proper areas and that people move well within the different divisions, which handles the parks, buildings, grounds, fleet, highway, and the water and sewer divisions. There's about 58 members. Their salaries range from $40,000 to $70,000 depending upon where they are. So like all of our other contracts, although this is a one year because after the study, we'll reassess. Okay, the others, I like to do three years. I don't like to be back at the table if I can help it on one year. But in this case, we have the study coming out there. It's a 3% cost of living increase. There is one new top step, both effective July 1st, 2018. In 2019, like we've done with every other union, we will roll the uniform allowance back into the base that actually, it, it ends up causing, saving a lot of headaches that could come down the road. One of our brother communities got hit with a very large fine from the federal government because slips weren't taken correctly or what have you. The, when we have events downtown, there is a working for person that handles the events. And if you've been in any of them, this is the go-to person on there. There's $150. per event stipend and a 500 annual tool replacement allowance for our mechanics. They might break tools and what have you. It's $200 now. The total cost of this is $146,000, $106,000 out of tax levy or $100,040 out of water and sewer. This is a very fair deal and consistent with the other unions. I have been very pleased with the Collin Center that has come in and done the other assessments. They've done a great job. They're familiar with us. It's out of UMass and this is really what they do at the Collin Center of Public Policy. So this was a good, good deal for the union, fair for the town and fair to them. So I would recommend approval and of course this goes to town meeting. All of our contracts go to town meeting to be voted up or down, as you know.
Questions, discussion?
I know that we approved the DPW laborers contract and per law, no de.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Hearing none? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Next, we have three E. It's the traffic advisory recommendation. Parking at 974 Main Street be prohibited on the east side of the main street, 10 feet to the north of the driveway and 10 feet to the south of the driveway. Questions, comments?
Okay.
Motions?
This was actually a group of citizens that came into us that 974 Main Street is that condominium complex across the street from Tequila's and Greenwood Plaza. And what's happening is unfortunately, people are parking too close to their driveway. So it's a safety issue. People can't come in and people can't get out. And there's a sightline issue there. I actually went out and I took some pictures that I had, or a picture that I'd sent out. All this is doing, it's not removing spaces, it's making sure that they cannot park where they shouldn't be parking anyway. Traffic advisory, looked at it, Lieutenant Scory went out there and I would recommend that we do put the signage up there. No parking here at a corner, kind of you see that everywhere. And so that's basically it. Lot more traffic for you at the next meeting too.
Right, I bet. Sounds good. Any other questions?
I know that we approved the advisory recommendation of parking at 974 Main Street is prohibited on the east side of Main Street, 10 feet to the north and 10 feet to the south of that driveway.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none? Great. Makes it a safer town.
Thank you very much.
Regular town meeting warrant, possible vote to approve in November 5th, 2018. Regular town meeting warrant.
In your packet is the warrant for our town meeting coming up. I asked Mr. Stinson to be here in case there are any questions on any of the articles. I will tell you that normally on the fall warrant, we usually have one page, one page of a, of a warrant that we, we put on the, you know, we put out on the website and what have you. We post it and we put it, people get that actual page at the, at the meeting. But actually Sherri decided that she didn't think that was appropriate for 39 articles. So she's put together the book that will be available at town meeting and we're gonna, I have to fill in a couple of things in it, but it's gonna look much, much nicer at the meeting. So Sherri, thank you for doing, it's a great job. In this though, there are a number of items. There's the, my very pithy report that I know you all look forward to. I'm, I'm taking any information that people want about quotes in there, so let me know. I like to have some nice quote in there for something. Using the free cash, we talked about that tonight, but using $3 million to balance the budget, which is article two. Article three and four, and this will be available once approved tonight, will be on the website as well, and will be posted in the newspaper as it is per law. Article three is an article where we recently went through a sale of a number of bonds. And thing about bonds is when you have a triple A bond rating, you actually get paid points by the bank. So think of it when you get your, your mortgage interest, mortgage, you pay the bank a point or you pay them what have you. They're actually paying us points on this. So what we do with the points is we say, all right, the, the market is paying us, in this case, $147,000. So we borrow $147,000 less. So we apply it right to what we need. So what this article does is allow us to take those premiums, they're called premiums, and to apply it to the bonds. It's kind of a cleanup article there. Article four lists a number of old bonds that were passed in the 90s and the early 2000s as, one as late as 2008. These are borrowings that we've completed the projects. We didn't need all of the money, so the money is authorized but not borrowed. So it's still on our books as an authorized and it's something that the, when we get, come in and we see the auditors or the, the surveillance, I'll say, what about these? These, let's clean it up. It's not, it's not a debt we're gonna undertake. So these are, for instance, the Woodville School, $642. Now, we can't take it now and use it for something else. I would love to do that, but all those will be cleaned up at town meeting and that was actually requested by the town treasurer. Article five and article six are the contracts that we just, one for the clerical, one for the laborers. Article seven is the very exciting article regarding the phase one of the design improvements and upgrades to the downtown right of way. You will note that that does include the areas that Councilor Smith Galvin asked for in the, the lake and the Spalding Street area for the last meeting. Article eight is a school committee article. We talked about that tonight. That is a putting half a million dollars into the special education stabilization fund. Item number, article number nine, you may remember at the town meeting, we, in April, we funded $5,000 to do a study of the issues with the fencing and netting at Walsh Field. The issue is, is that baseballs are flying over the fence into the tennis courts and you can imagine how that would make some of the people playing tennis feel.
I think too, there's the issue of the balls going to the stands.
And the stands too. Part and parcel of this, and I wasn't good enough to play high school baseball like maybe Mr. Longo was, but part and parcel is that that backstop is too far back. Rick, is that correct? The back, so the backstop will be moved forward as part of this project. And that's 200,000?
200.
I think 200.
I think it's 200.
Yeah.
What is listed as 200?
Right around 200.
Right around 200. Article 10, which I'm gonna ask Mr. Stinson to talk about, 10, 11, and 12, and 13, and 14 are his, but 10 is for a townwide ortho, photo, planometric, and topographical mapping of the town. Easy for me to say, but I guess that really is very important in making sure we have the topography right at the town. So maybe if you can give us two sentences on that, Rick.
Normally, every community will do aerial flyovers to gather information on their infrastructure. And that information's used in planning and it's to the level of detail now where you use it in actual plans. The last one we did was back in, I believe, around 2000, 2001, sometime in that timeframe. You should be doing it every five years. We do not do that. So this would update that, but it would also give us a much greater level of detail, which will be used in a lot of projects like the Water Main Project, the 4.1 million that we appropriated at town meeting, be used in that project, will be used on the Main Street project. All of that information will be used as, as part of that. And it'll pick up driveway aprons, structures, trees. It picks up all the detail that you need, curbing, all of that stuff.
Who gets to write it in the plan?
Hi.
Does someone from?
None of us.
No, really?
None of us.
That'd be so much fun.
Is that done from a plane or is that done more?
Drone.
Is it a drone? You can do it, some of it you can do with drones. Drones are interesting. One, it would take quite a while to do, but two, you cannot fly a drone over people. You would have to fly it over buildings and try to capture it from the side and stuff. And I didn't know that until recently.
So when this is all done, does the town have plans to realign actual?
We will have, we will have photographs of all of the structural information out there and that, those photographs are then put onto plans so that information can be used.
Right, but will align the actual lots with what we see from auto mapping? So right now, if you look at the auto mapping and you look at the town lot, sometimes the sidewalks don't line up or the street doesn't line up.
Right.
So after this is all said and done, everything should line up, correct?
Should line up, right.
Excellent.
And that's one of the problems we have now is that a lot of our information, when you go into our GIS system, is off not by a foot or six inches, it's off by four or five feet. And we wanna tighten that all up.
Questions anymore?
Which one, the next?
Article 11 is the annual inflow infiltration removal program, which is.
Yeah, that's a, that's an annual article. The MWRA has put out phases 11 and 12, and so we're asking for appropriation of that. The, and, and by law, you have to appropriate it, even though we're not, right now, putting out any money. You have to appropriate it to spend it. It is a 75% grant, 25, 25% we pay back, pay that back over 10 years and that's interest-free. And that's for investigating the, investigating and repairing the sewer system to try to take out as much flow as possible.
Next, an article, and these are coming out of water and sewer enterprise accounts or reserve accounts. We talked about water mains throughout town and sewer mains replacement.
This is, both of these articles, the water and the sewer one, are specifically for the Hopkins Street Bridge. The state is replacing that bridge deck. We have an opportunity, we have a sewer line there, we have an opportunity to replace that now. So that's what that funding is for. We also have an opportunity to put a water main across the bridge, which would serve the Terrant Lane subdivision, which would, instead of letting that revenue go elsewhere, that will come to the town. It will, and at some point, we'll be able to pick up the houses that Reading supplies now, and there's probably a half dozen that they supply on South Street.
The next, article 14, and then we're gonna stop going through these line by line. We can tell this, but article 14, 15, and 16 are actually, unless the council wants to, are actually all in regarding work that DPW director has done with the bylaw review committee to talk about how we look at funding cuts in our roadways. This, we've spent a lot of time at this board talking about utility cuts and what have you into the roads and how they lessen the life of the road and how can we spread that cost out to whether it's Verizon, our own water and sewer department, light, gas, or a developer coming in. So with that, I'll let Rick talk about it. Or then maybe Julie.
There's a question, but go ahead.
The first one, which relates to 175-4, that's actually an existing article. So it does modifications to the existing article to correct some, some items that Dan Lieber will talk about at town meeting. The other thing it does is it adds in here a life cycle maintenance fee in the formula here. And the formula basically takes the, the applicant's impact to the road, square footage. It will take a cost of repairing that trench at $8 a square foot, a mobilization fee to bring someone out there. And then it will use our pavement management system, which will provide the rating, and then that formula will calculate what the fee is to, whether it be the water division, whether it be a contractor who's doing work for someone, or whether it would be the Wakefield Municipal Light Gas Department. That fee would then go into an account. And I'll explain that because that's a separate, whole separate warrant article or two warrant articles. And that would in turn provide added funding for maintaining those roads. One of the worst things you can do is to cut a roadway. And the, as you know, we spend 2.1 million dollars, or we need to spend 2.1 million dollars a year. The last probably three or four years, it was at 900,000. This current year, it's at 1.15 million. So we are always falling behind. And when it's a contractor or the town or whoever, WMLGD comes along and cuts that road, we have two problems. One is that it's a patch and we're gonna end up having to do additional repairs to that. And two, it is, reduces the life expectancy of that roadway. So that, this would provide funding to take care of that and help us maintain our roads. The 15 actually adopts the revolving account for that fee, and it would allow us to expend that funds, those funds on roads and only on roads. You cannot spend it on people. It has to be spent on, whether it be materials or a contractor doing his thing, but we can't spend it on town forces. And then article 16, you have to, when you adopt that legislation, actually set a limit that we can expend. So if we were to collect $500,000, which isn't gonna happen, this says we can only expend the $150,000 of that. Okay? So that would sit there till the next year. It would always be in the fund.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Julie have a question?
Julie?
I just had a question because we in town council received a letter from the advisory board of Public Works. We were all copied on this in August to the Wakefield Municipal Gas and Light Department. And it outlined a number of things, including the roadway life cycle maintenance fee. And it indicated that the advisory board was gonna come to the town council with some recommendations and invited the light department to sit down and talk about it. And I just, I was a little, I think it's great what we're doing and we, and we need to do it and the roads are crucial. I just wanna make sure that the stakeholders, the kind of the broader community stakeholders have been part of this discussion.
Well, I think the stake, there's only one stakeholder and that is you guys, because you guys have the roads and own the property. Okay? So you guys are the stakeholders. They, everyone else is a user of your property. Okay? And so this is a way of maintaining your property.
And I, and I appreciate that. I absolutely appreciate that. But I think kind of in, in terms of being transparent and wanting, you know, everybody to maybe have a say in this and look at costs, and we can say that certainly we are the main stakeholder and our constituents are, and I, and I have no means am I defending the light department, but I just think a broader conversation about this may find creative solutions and may think about cost issues that maybe we haven't thought about yet. So I'm not necessarily opposed to this. I just continuously feel like we're moving forward and, you know, I think a process was laid out very nicely in this memo and I don't quite know what their authority is. But I do know that the light department has not had an opportunity, in fact, the light department reached out to the town counselors, a number of us, and Steve was copied on this, and invited us to a meeting to discuss this or suggested it. And so I, I feel like there's a lot of discussions already going on and maybe, Steve, you can fill me in on this.
No, I can lighten you because actually the, and Rick was out at seminar or something today, so I haven't really had a chance to talk to him. Peter Dion did reach out to me this afternoon and we traded some, some talks and I talked with Gene Solomon about exactly what you're saying.
Okay.
Getting the stakeholders together because that is very important, that we coordinate. This aside, there's other things we need to coordinate.
Of course.
So yes, that is in the works as of today.
Okay.
So, thank you.
Okay. And, and I don't, I'm not saying I don't want this warrant in here. I think that hopefully there is some time to have that discussion and certainly we can have that at town meeting as well.
Yeah.
Can also tell you, the Advisory Board votes all of these articles. So with the exception of the bylaw change that the Bylaw Review Committee does, the Advisory Board has voted the lifecycle maintenance.
And that's fine. It's just in this letter, it indicates that they were bringing it to us, and they never brought it to us.
Well, they are, and that's what they're doing tonight.
So they're bringing it to us, and now it's going to town meeting. I would have just expected it to be brought to us before that.
Well, I think, oh, before. That's what they're bringing to us now, though, right?
But they're bringing it to us in a town, in a warrant. I mean, I would have thought it would have been discussed.
I don't, there was some reason, there was some miscommunication between the MLD and the Advisory Board.
Because this was on August twenty-first. I don't think the light department got it for a number of weeks. So I think there had been some unanticipated, yeah. So that's all I wanted to raise, but I'm in favor of this, and absolutely anything we can do to get better roads is critical.
The remainder of the articles are Charter and Bylaw Review, which...
Right.
We don't have to go through this.
With the exception of Article thirty-nine, which is a potential settlement if we do reach one of those, that we could be talking about. So that is your warrant. I've never seen one thirty-nine in the fall.
Quick, do we have plans for a workshop or a Q and A with the community to maybe kind of, I've never seen thirty-nine articles.
We can, I mean, it would have to have, well, the Charter Commission has had a number of them on their own. I don't know if the bylaw has, off the top of my head, they may have. Those are twenty-five of them. So, yeah.
We're looking at three nights.
I'll talk to them, yeah. We're looking at three nights, I think.
Or four, depending, have you put your turkey in early, just...
Steve, just, I think for those watching or those that'll be reading about this, for their own planning purposes, obviously, town meeting begins...
Begins on the fifth.
On the fifth. And the expectation would be that it would be continued to, can you provide those dates?
It will certainly go on the fifth, it'll go the...
Like five, eight?
Eight, and then it'll go, well, probably the fifteenth, because the twelfth is the Veterans Day holiday.
So the expectation would be five, eight, and fifteen, so people can kind of plan around that.
Hopefully not going to the nineteenth. I would hope not.
Fifteen is one of...
Right, so we're going to have to talk about what this board wants to do while we talk with the chair.
I just think it's helpful so that when people know if they want to, ten nights, two nights.
There's babysitting that has to be done.
That's an excellent point. People have always talked about that, not knowing when the dates are. Mary?
Steve, tell me what the process is. So in some instances, in some articles, we note the money cost, but it's not listed in the article. Is that...
Uh, yeah, well, we listen to the motion.
Okay.
Right. So it's never listed in, well, rarely listed in the article, because we may not know when we post it, and if we post some certain in the article, then can we get, can we go up or down at town meeting?
Okay.
So that's the question. You know what I mean?
I hear that, but I also, there are some numbers we know that Rick just said, and the special education.
Right.
And so I would just, if we know them, I think it's more transparent to actually put it in the article and not leave it for later.
Well, we won't put it in the article, but we can put it on something.
Somewhere, so somebody just see that.
It can't be in those articles, because someone might change it at a town meeting.
So somewhere, so people know, and...
Pre-print it and put it in, just a stuffer.
Right. We can certainly do that, yeah.
Well, it's in, it'll be in your presentation that we're posting, some of the information. This sped article, you put five-hundred thousand on there.
Right, right. Some of them are, but we'll put something in all of them.
Like Peter said, the stuff.
Yeah, absolutely.
And then all of this will be online, so people can look at it before.
Yep, it will be, the warrant will be on probably tomorrow or the next day.
People can read it for the next two weeks.
People can have fun. Nothing like reading articles to...
Okay, so I think we still need a motion to approve the number of the fifth, twenty-eighteen regular town meeting warrant with the thirty-nine articles.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'll oppose.
Thank you, Rick.
Seven-zero.
Thanks, Rick.
Thanks, Rick. Okay, so...
Seven, eight.
Okay. So we have to go back to public hearing?
Nope, it's just a settlement.
I move that we vote to schedule a public hearing for October twenty-ninth, two thousand eighteen, at seven, eight, seven fifteen, for change of manager and alteration of premises for Tonau, at one-seventy-five, more than that.
Second.
Any discussion, any questions? Okay, good. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Hearing none, seven-zero. Thank you, thank you, Ann. Okay, so four C, the Shell gas station, possible vote to schedule a public hearing for October twenty-ninth, seven-thirty, for change of license to include diesel fuel for Shell gas station at three fifty-six Lowell Street.
So moved for discussion, just a question, Steve?
Yeah, it's Lowell Vernon, too, just the people.
Right, I know where it is. Will somebody be there to answer questions about if there's going to be increased traffic or they...
Well, yes. The petitioner will be there, and engineer will be there. I will tell you that this is a two-pronged approach, because the, and I have told the petitioner that, that they also need to go to the Board of Appeals.
Okay, right.
Because this is a change of use of that property.
Okay.
If they're going to go for diesel.
Right.
Did they say anything about twenty-four hours, by any chance?
They haven't said any of that yet. My sense is that they don't want twenty-four hours, but that...
Okay, no, they didn't say anything here about anything that I read, but I just was thinking about prime gas when they were trying for that. Paul?
Just a quick question, is that already one of our established truck routes, Lowell and Vernon area?
I don't believe that it is.
But I don't recall. Okay, that would be something that we'd want to, at least, no, it's not allowed now. We don't want to have them think of it being a possible location for the filling of large trucks.
Yeah, I don't think they're going to maneuver in that gas station anyway. They're that...
Sorry?
I think they're too large to maneuver around that gas station if you're like, looking for an eighteen-wheeler.
Okay.
But I get your point, Paul. I'm sorry, yeah.
I just think for planning purposes, Steve, if you could let them know that there will probably be a host of questions related to, you know, environmental impact, you know, noise, construction, traffic, all those things, so that when they're here, it's, they have a fruitful presentation.
I will let them know again.
The last thing they want to have is to be able to say, I'll get back to you on that, because it just delays the process for them as well. So let's get ahead of that if we could.
Just to let them know, too, we see some phone calls on that as well, and had Steve check that, just to be sure that all the permits were obtained, that they needed for the operation, and they are...
At this point. If they were just replacing the existing gas tanks with gas, it's a, it's a question of going and seeing the fire chief and signing the form, this board would have no involvement in that.
Good points. Okay, so do we have a motion to schedule a public hearing for...
I need a second for discussion?
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Hearing none, thank you. Okay, so next we have five, with the personal asylum appointments, Human Rights Commission, possible discussion and vote to appoint a member, a member to the Human Rights Commission, Vivian L. Tubbs and Jennifer Betcher.
I move. I was going to move, and then for discussion, to appoint Jennifer Betcher. Am I saying that right?
Yep.
Betcher, for appointment to Human Rights Commission, Commission for Discussion.
And discussion? Questions, Paul?
No, no, I've read both of the resumes, the points that came in. I've actually had the pleasure of having a conversation with Jennifer. She's already, goes to almost all of the Human Rights Commission meetings now, as a, not a member, but as a participant in them. So she, she felt that it was just the time for her to step forward. I think she'd make a great candidate.
I've also had conversations, and as I've done, I told Jennifer that, you know, she was qualified enough to get my vote today. I think Ann Tubbs is also a wonderful applicant, and I love the fact that she said if she wasn't appointed, she would certainly go to meetings and volunteer, which is oftentimes the precursor to getting appointed when there's another opening. So I think it's great, we have two people that want to be a part of such an important commission, and I would just, you know, based on my conversation and seeing Jennifer at so many events that the HRC puts on as well, I would vote for her tonight.
Any other discussion?
I was curious, we were provided with what's titled Notes for Discussion with each of these applicants, but it's not clear who they're from. There's no name associated with it. Is there?
HRC members.
It is the Human Rights, yeah, they provided that one.
Is it just like their collective interview, or...
Yeah, exactly. Just a little synopsis of what their interview process was.
So each candidate appears before the entire...
No, it's a phone call. So as liaison, I can answer that question. So they get their applicants, applicants actually go to Sherry, and then Sherry passes on to the Human Rights Commission, and they assign one person from the Human Rights Commission to call and ask the same questions to each of the candidates.
So do we know who, was it the same person that asked the questions of both candidates, and who was that person, or who were those people?
I don't know the answer to that. I don't know why we need to know.
What, I'm sorry?
I don't know the answer to that.
I think that they both present as very qualified. I think I very much respect Ann Tubbs', you know, service to this country certainly, and her interest in being a new voice in our community, it sounds, having returned to Wakefield. So I do think that she could be a great asset for this commission, but just in general. And I think that Jennifer has certainly had, has a demonstrated commitment to WHRC, which I think is, is important as well. And so I think that it's a benefit to, to WHRC to have these two people express the interest and continue involvement.
Yeah, as we continue to see this committee get larger and larger, and it's great to see two qualified candidates, I actually had a great discussion with Jen at the Healthy Living Expo on Saturday to kind of explain, I think she grabs you, Paul, as well, to kind of explain her position, the reason why she wants to get on this board, so I will be supporting her.
Any other questions, comments? Julie, you look too happy down there.
Oh, no, I'm very happy. Jennifer is an excellent candidate, as is, as is Ann, I think, as, echo it, everybody are very, in a very good position here.
Okay, so we have the...
I moved.
And so, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, seven-zero. Congratulations, Jennifer, wherever you are. Okay, next we have the approval of the minutes. Regular board minutes, possibly, possible vote to approve the September twenty-seventh, twenty-eighteen regular minutes. We also have a...
I move that we approve the minutes as amended, as sent to us.
Second.
From September twenty-seventh?
Discussion of comments on what was changed. Everyone's okay?
Yep.
Highlighted version. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Hearing none?
Shall I move to approve the September twenty-seventh executive minutes as well?
That would be great.
All right.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Hearing none? Okay, I think we're back to seven C, one-day liquor license application, Wakefield Food Pantry for Volunteer Celebration on November third, twenty-eighteen, from five to nine P M. at the Americal Civic Center.
Second.
Discussion?
Discussion.
I'd like to waive the fee. Have we waived the fee officially?
I think in our last meeting, we said all Wakefield nonprofits, I can't think of anything else that would fit the bill.
Absolutely.
Okay, good. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Hearing none, okay. Okay, acceptance expenditure eight, Wakefield Soccer Association, possible vote to accept the fencing on the far side of Beasley Oval, six-foot fencing on the Vernon Street side of Dolbear Field, and the flat-screen television in the Heritage Room at the Americal Civic Center, all of which were purchased in a stall with costs paid solely by Wakefield Soccer Association. Thank you very much.
Yes.
Very nice.
I move that we accept those expenditures and with thanks to Wakefield Soccer Association.
With many thanks.
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Hearing none? Very nice. Library donation, eight B, possible vote to accept and expend a donation to the library in the amount of thirty-four thousand, five forty-six point seventy-four dollars.
So moved.
So moved, with thanks to the Blossoms Committee for raising twenty-six thousand, four hundred and one for the library.
That's great.
Excellent.
Any other discussion or comments?
I just always think of Phyllis when we get big donations to the library.
Where did we get that from again?
No, she would question the library when they came for their budget.
All right, what are they doing with it?
You know, what are you...
Why do they need three new chairs?
Why do you have so much...
Why are you buying books?
Hey, she kept us honest.
She was good. Okay, so all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Hearing none? Okay, so warrant review and signing. Julie, how's that going?
It's going, I think the highlight, let's see, the highlight, our new uniforms for our crossing guards, which is good.
Good to be seen.
Fabulous.
Especially in some places more than others.
Excellent. And so did we miss something, though? Did we miss one or that?
I think so, I think cross it out.
Okay. Okay, so matters not anticipated by the chairperson within forty-eight hours of meeting, number ten. Start with Julie?
Sure. It's been a busy week. Last week, we had the Hate You Give book discussion, Ann and I were there, and it was, it was a difficult discussion and very enlightening. I wanted to thank the Human Rights Committee and Kevin Dua for moderating that. While we're on the subject of the library, I think I've mentioned before, but the library's doing about a six-month kind of sustainability theme, and they announced today that they're going to do a tour of the waste management facility on Route One, and it's a few of us that are excited about that, but they have a whole series of great activities going on. And then I just wanted to thank Wendy Dennis for all of her support in building the farmer's market over the last ten years. She stepped down from the Board of the Farmer's Market this week, and I think that Wakefield owes a debt of gratitude for what she has built up, and I hope that it can be carried along in the same vein. That's all I have.
Okay.
I wanted to congratulate the Boys and Girls Club of Wakefield on a tremendously successful gala. The numbers that were coming in looked like over ninety thousand dollars raised for a really important and consequential organization. And so those of us that were able to attend heard very moving stories of, of just the impact that this organization has on the lives of children, teenagers, and it's, it's a bit of a lifeline in a lot of ways, socially, emotionally, and, and they just do great work, and I know in their new facility, it's just going to be that much, that much greater an opportunity to really have an impact on the community. So I congratulate them on that. I also congratulate WAVE, Wake for the Lines Against Violence, on their recent five K. They had a great turnout, great numbers, great sponsorship. They were able to raise a lot of money as well for the important work that they do, and I can't underscore enough how important that is, especially this month, Domestic Violence Awareness Month. There are so many different forms that domestic violence can take, and we have resources here in town, and WAVE is, is a great resource as well that can help to direct people as need be. So I would encourage anyone who is a survivor or finds themselves in that situation to reach out to what is available here, because we have a lot to offer. Thanks.
I would also echo what Julie said about thanking Wendy Dennis for laying the foundation for an outstanding farmer's market and for working so hard to get it off the ground and keep it at the level that it is. The Hate You Give was an excellent thing to be a part of. Kevin Dua should moderate more panels. He was so respectful in a very tough discussion, but it was excellent. I want to echo what Betsy had posted about registering to vote. Well, you can still register to vote, but actually voting. So early voting is going to happen Monday, October twenty-second through Friday, November second. This is before the November sixth official date. Monday through Wednesday, eight A M. to four-thirty P M. Thursday, eight A M. to seven P M., and Friday, eight A M. to twelve-thirty. She's also having Saturday and Sunday voting, which is amazing. Nine A M. to three on Saturday, eleven A M. to two. All of that will happen at Town Hall, so there really is no excuse for anyone not to vote, especially for those who might not be a fan of the galvan voting, although I think it's gone very well. Really take advantage of it. You have to show your voice. That's it.
Just real quickly, the Healthy Living Expo on Saturday was a tremendous success, and I believe the light department has sent a couple of crews to Florida to help out with the relief efforts. I just want to wish them Godspeed and, you know, thank them for all their hard work down there.
That's great. Mary?
So to echo what, some of what was said before, the WAVE run was great. They had sixty-one runners and raised over eighty-four hundred dollars that day, so it was a really good event and successful event. And just to echo the HRC, Human Rights Commission had a successful event last week, and there's two events this week. two events this week. So the Anti-Defamation League is coming to their meeting tomorrow, 6:30, in this room. And then on Wednesday, there's a conversation on transgender rights that they are hosting. So two big HRC events this week. And then I just wanted to give just kind of an update, because it came up this week, and as we're talking about the warrant and all the bylaw changes, just a reminder, as we serve as liaisons and work on all the committees that we have in town, including HRC, that we just, I mean, appointed someone, is that the town bylaws do require public notice of openings on any appointments to town committees, regardless of who is empowered to make the appointment. And I think that's a really important thing that we keep, make sure, that we're really good about doing notice when we have updates, so we get good candidates like Ann and Jen. And also, our website is up to date. So I know this is a constant, Steve, but a lot of our committee membership is outdated, and I'd love to see that updated with terms on it listed as well, so people know when their terms are up.
Thanks, Mary. Mr. De Nocko.
Thank you, Mr. Jeff. I have absolutely nothing to say at this point.
Sherry, mark that. That's the first time in 10 years that Paul has not said anything. Thank you, Paul.
I want to thank the council for doing a good job tonight.
You're going to have to do it again next week.
I'm done. I have nothing to say.
Oh, I'm sorry.